He's now called to order, are he? Any items from the public? We're going to need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Been properly moved and seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Thank you. And just for the record, Commissioner Boyd is on video this morning. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you for having me.
Are there items on the purchase order that you have any questions about? I did have one this morning and Gary cleared it up. It came out of day report, but his explanation took care of it. And it actually came out of their nonprofit fund, Fund 100. Internal budget revision. Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir. It's that time of year, Will. You probably for the next three meetings, you'll see plenty of these as departments try to survive and keep everything balanced. The first one you have is from the sheriff. Account 708, which is the police reserves. He's requesting permission to move $2,225 from materials and supplies to uniforms. And I believe the rest are from me. The first one is from account 401, which is the county commission's budget to move 7,000 from 105, which is insurance into 106, which is retirement. Account 416 to move $10,000 from insurance into FICA. Again, account 416 to move $100,000 from insurance to salary. Account 416 again to move 8,000 from insurance to overtime. 416 to move 1,000 from insurance to holiday pay. Account 424, which is the courthouse account, to move 35,000 from materials and repair of buildings to utilities. Count 428, which is IT, to move 20,000 from rents to telephone. Count 428, again IT, to move 10,000 from professional services to dues and subscriptions. The next one is account 435, which is facilities, to move 5,000 from salaries to holiday pay. Count 443, which is state grants, to move 3,000 from materials and supplies to training. Excuse me. And account 443, again state grants, to move 17,000 from materials and supplies to professional services. Account 801, which is mental health, to move 1,000 from insurance to holiday pay. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Change of status. You have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Joseph Kinzer, prosecutor and attorney for Ryan Maiden as a summer intern with a compensation rate of $20 per hour, effective 6/22/25. New hire recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Caitlin LaRocchi as a part-time telecommunicator with a compensation rate of $26.17 per hour, effective 6/12/25. New hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Jeff Tur as a deputy court marshal with an annual salary of $39,017. And that'd be effective 6/16/25. A change of status received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief for Thomas Gorman, to be promoted from firefighter four to lieutenant with a salary change from $64,771 to $71,361. That's effective 7/12/25. Approval of the minutes, May 22nd. Commissioners Whittaker and Commissioner Boyd were not present. So we'll just leave those in. And I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. There was nothing to be presented. You abstain. Thank you, sir. There's nothing to be presented by the assessor today. So, Mr. Hardy, if you would go with your board and meeting report.
I actually did not make my board meeting this week. I was in Morgantown with my daughter. We were celebrating her graduation and getting her stuff together to get back home and getting ready for a party. So I did not make my meeting this week through the water board. I apologize to the water board for missing it, but I wanted to spend some time with my daughter, so.
It's time worth celebrating.
It is. It's great. We went to Morgantown and did the celebration of the graduation and then we came home and had a big party. So I apologize for my insufficiencies in making my water board meeting, but I'm sure those guys didn't miss me. But, and I'll be planning commission meeting on Monday.
You did pretty good. You got her out of grad school or undergrad?
Undergrad. She finished her undergrad, but she's headed back to grad school. So hopefully when it's all said and done, both my daughters will have their master's degrees.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Catlett?
All of you, all of you should have received an email from Risa from Foreland Preservation about the 25th anniversary celebration. So I'm hoping that if you have the opportunity to attend, that you would. I think it's the 17th of June, like from 4:00 to 5:30. And it's out off of, right off of Exit 16 there. So close to office here. 25 years, it's hard to believe, but we almost have 10,000 acres now in foreland protection. So I did have an ambulance authority meeting last Thursday evening. And one of our main things was the increase in the transport fees to bill insurances. And Brandon's going to be on an agenda later today to address that issue. The ambulance authority voted unanimously to support that move. And I hope you will get support here today from the commission to do as well. So yesterday I had a school board safety committee meeting with Commissioner Gogan here and I at the Board of Ed. Some really good stuff going on over there. And of course, the newest thing is this emergency alert system called Raptor that they're going to try to get in place by the school year of, I don't know if they'll get it in by this fall or not. It's going to be close. It's going to be close, yeah. But it's going to be a really wonderful thing in alerting. All that need to be alerted in terms of issues at any of our public schools. So I praise the committee and the Board of Ed for their work they're doing in that respect. And also yesterday I had a senior services meeting. I started a nice conversation at the end of that meeting about trying to maybe expand services for the seniors out into the county areas. And the way the county's growing and northwest and south, obviously it all is about funding, of course, but, and a couple of years ago, they were doing some services down on the north end at a rural town, through a rural town club situation and all volunteers, which is difficult in today's world. But hopefully at some point they will be able to expand into our county areas. But the job that they do though is phenomenal. I can't be happy enough with the work that they do. And I applaud them for their efforts. That's all I have, sir.
Yeah, and I, I hope that they continue to look at that because there are, there are a lot of seniors spread out the county that don't have perhaps transportation to get into Martinsburg. So I think that those services could be expanded.
And as you said that, they do transport some people though from the Inwood area and the north end to the facility. But as you know, that's very difficult. But they get as many as they can into the facility from out in the county areas that don't have a way to get there. There are more of us every year in the senior realm though.
Adding them up.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyd, you have anything you'd like to add in?
I do not at the moment.
Right, thank you. This week I had the privilege to attend the Memorial Day service at Morgan Cabin and also the War Memorial Park. And it's always so well done. And thanks to all of those who made, put those programs together. And certainly thanks to our military personnel and certainly those, and those families that have given the ultimate sacrifice. We certainly owe them our respect. I did have a day report, a construction meeting, which that second floor has come along very nicely. They're waiting on some HVAC stuff. Doors will be in, I think, the second, first or second week of June. Then they'll finish up the painting and do the flooring. So that, that space has come along very nicely. As Steve mentioned, you know, we do sort of on the Berkeley County Safety Committee. That committee is very active and they're getting things accomplished. I'm very proud of that organization to try and do everything they can to keep the children and the staff safe. Also yesterday afternoon, Gary and I were on a call with Moody's, which is looking at our local economy as far as our county finances. And I thank Gary for his work in preparing for that call. I think it was very, very well received. And it's, it's always interesting, you know, with the questions that they lay out before you. And following that was the second reading of the Berkeley County Building Commission for the revenue bonds for the Inwood Park. So that's moving along. And today at 2 o'clock, I have a meeting with Department of Highways, our stormwater folks, in reference to some road repairs and flooding mitigation in the Berkeley Station area. That area has been plagued for quite a while and we've worked as closely as we can with the different agencies to try and improve that area. That rounds, pretty much rounds out my.
It's no question the worst area in all Berkeley County at this time.
It is, but there's still areas, you know, that are of great concern like Henshaw Road and Douglas Grove Road, you know, where people travel through there and end up in a mess. They gotta be rescued. Those are always challenges. We have a new application for an applicant for the Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority. Shanita Wine is here this morning. If you'd like to come forward, Shanita?
The answer is no.
You want us to have him leave the room by any chance?
No, it's okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve on the ambulance authority.
Oh goodness. I'm Shanita Wine. I'm from Berkeley County and I work for the hospital and just like to give back to the community.
Yeah. Any new ideas you'd like to bring forward to the, to the committee? Things you think maybe need to be fixed or things that would maybe work better? Or just any ideas you just wanted maybe get in there and get your feet wet?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Because I really don't know anything.
There's nothing wrong with that. I took that approach to the legislature. I sat back and was quiet and for about five minutes and then same approach here, but.
About two minutes.
Right. Well, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Mr. Catlett?
Knowing her background as a nurse and that to me validates the fact that she would be a good candidate and we appreciate that. And, you know, I was the one to kind of push that. The position that you're replacing was a, our only woman on the board.
Oh, okay.
And I thought it was important. We have as many female employees with the ambulance authorities almost as we do males. And I think a lot of times women see things from a different perspective and a better perspective than us men. And so I'm hoping to fill that application or that spot with, with it. And I think with your background, you'd be a great candidate. So we do appreciate the fact you're willing to serve and thank you very much. Other than that, I don't have any other questions.
I know you were a former teacher. And what is, what is your other skill set that you think you could bring to this board to help make them better? I think that you would probably understand a whole lot more on the medical side, being an employee at the hospital.
Possibly. And then if I don't know, I could definitely find out in a more, in a more layman's way to explain it. Ask somebody, since I'm readily available around them daily. That was a thought.
What do you enjoy more, nursing or teaching?
She's actually a medical technologist, Mr. Catlett.
So I do all of the lab work and I, I love them both. But I really enjoy this one, getting to see the patients and who actually wants to be there.
All right. Well, I don't have any further questions. Thank you for your interest in applying and we'll go from there.
Thank you for the consideration.
All right, thank you.
He wasn't nervous or anything?
No.
Not at all. That's her heart.
So we're running a little bit early. So Brandon, are you prepared for your? If you would, come on up, please. That's for EMS rates.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Appreciate it. So I know Mr. Catlett does a great job already of keeping you up to date on the ambulance authority and things that are going on, but just some quick statistical updates I thought I'd, thought I'd bring to you. Still on track for about 16,000 responses this year. And that usually results in about 8,500 to 9,000 transports were actually taking somebody to the hospital as a result of those responses. And that's about a 4% growth year over year that we see. So it's been, it's been pretty stable and steady growth for us too. We did have nine crews at peak time during the day and seven at night. And along with, you know, the budget that we approved Thursday night, that the board approved Thursday night, then my request today, we're hoping to expand.
And all advanced life support.
That was my next, yes, sir. All, yep. And the very next thing we did was recently, the, you know, with the, with the last household fee increase that occurred as well as the, supported by the non-residential as well is those three 24-hour BLS trucks. And as of last month, we upgraded all three of those basic life support trucks to advanced life support trucks, which is phenomenal. It's a, it's a huge deal. Yes, sir. And we're very proud of that. And that was, that took a lot of work. And again, you're all supporting, we appreciate, appreciate that. So really proud of this team. And you'll see a little later today, some of the, another example of the, of the good work. So I'll be sticking around for that too. But as noted in your read ahead, so I'm here today to kind of do step two of the request for approval for our service rates. I presented that to the board Thursday evening. And Mr. Catlett just said that was approved, but per the ordinance, I'm here to ask, seek your approval as well. I have some suggested rates that we'll go over. But hopefully I have some information to give you that, you know, anticipates some questions. And of course, available to answer, you know, whatever you have. But I'd like to kind of lead off with what's, what are we not asking for? What are we, what are we not asking to increase? And that would be the household fees and the non-residential fees. We're proposing no increase to those. So, you know, that affects, you know, all, you know, all of our citizens here. So what we are asking for today is approval of these rates that we send to insurance companies that is half of our revenue. Okay? So I just want to make sure that there's a clear distinction between that. So the $110 household fee, that is not changing. The non-residential fee, that's, that's, that's assessed based on how that building or how that structure is assessed based on their occupants and their square footage. That is also not changing. So I'm not seeking any changes there. So who will this impact? So about 25% of our payer mix, so of the people that we transport, who pays that bill? Or who, who helps pay that bill? It's about 25% is commercial, commercial insurance. And that also includes auto insurance. So for the car accidents that we go to, we bill auto insurance for that as well. So, so the increase in these rates will actually be more impactful on the insurance companies than anyone else. And that really is where, you know, from my perspective, where we need to try to optimize revenue. So example, this year, our ambulance fees are set to outpace our ambulance billing revenue. So what I would like to do is shift that so, so for the payers that actually use our services and the insurance companies that, you know, have these beneficiaries that use our service, I would like to have them contribute to a larger percentage, you know, of our revenue rather than, you know, the, than the fees, you know, that, that we rely on. So this is a little bit of a shift to that as well. We're still going to offer the homestead exemptions. As an example, year to date, we've, we've had a reduction in our revenue by $110,000 by offering the homestead exemptions that they apply for, the citizens apply for through the assessor's office and that we are happy, you know, to, to oblige. So that's been about $110,000 that our citizens have taken advantage of and we're, we're glad for that. And what do we tend to, you know, what do we tend to get from this? So we, we intend, I forecast about a $300,000 pickup in revenue from payments from the insurance companies. Now, full transparency, we can't determine right now, you know, or really ever, what, what insurance plans do people have? Do they have high deductibles? Do they have low deductibles? Do they have high coinsurance? Do they have low coinsurance? Is it a percentage? All those things, you know, that, that, that the beneficiaries choose, they, you know, they get to choose their plans. So that, that we can't impact. However, in healthcare, you know, sometimes it's a race for a deductible to see who's going to satisfy it first. But for those patients that we do transport and for these bills that we do send to the insurance company, you know, they're, that patient's also getting a bill from the hospital. So we kind of bill simultaneously roundabout, you know, depends on how long your, your revenue cycle is. But when we bill, the insurance company is going to get, you know, the hospital as well as us, you know, roundabout the same time. So, so just, just to highlight kind of the, the low impact to the citizens from this change, but also the, the big impact that it would have on our budget. So what do we intend to do with this money? So there's, there's real tangible things that we intend to do. This isn't, you know, this isn't just to, you know, add money to a bank account or anything like that. We hope to accomplish two, well, three major goals. Number one, our current rates haven't been changed since 2016. Fuel compensation, everything, you know, you can imagine. I mean, ambulance, fully stocked ambulance right now is up to $400,000 and that's a modestly priced unit. So that's kind of what we're staring down the barrel of. So all those, you know, all those fixed and variable costs are going up. So number one, we hope to set these rates that is at or just slightly above our actual expenses. Right now, our cost per transport is about $1,137 forecast on this new budget. Our rates today are below our current and forecasted costs. So we need to be billing at least what our costs are. That, that, that's very important to do, especially as they average out rates across the country. So that's number one. It's going to bring your rates up.
Brandon, you may have gotten there and I hate to interrupt you, but.
That's okay.
Those that are on Medicaid or Medicare, the most they pay, the ambulance store is $488. And that's all we can collect. We can't collect any more than that. So that transport's costing us over a thousand. And that was about, that's about 35%, I think, of our transports.
Over 50.
Over 50?
With Medicare, Medicaid, Medicare Advantage plans.
And the most we can get is $488, so.
Yes, so the largest payer mix is paying us half of what our costs are. So, yeah, thank, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. It wasn't on the list here, but yeah, thank you for, thank you for getting to that. So, you know, we, we really can impact our revenue in that. So this is, you know, a way for us to make sure that our revenue is optimized while being as least impactful to our citizens as, you know, as possible. So I am also happy to report that our expenses are also well controlled and our performance is above average. So the, the, just two weeks ago, an EMS index was just posted and published by the, with the Aim High Organization. It's a reputable organization. It's a reputable organization backed by Page, Wolf, Bergen, Worth. It's a, it's a law firm that, that supports EMS agencies. The national average is about $2,200 cost per transport. The ambulance authority is running at 1,100. And that's with 100% ALS units on the road. So I think we've, we've demonstrated that our costs are very well managed. And Mr. Catlett can tell you that we now have a total quality management dashboard that basically has clinical indicators and operational and safety indicators that say, if we're hitting these marks, we're providing a good service. And that isn't just something we made up. So we use, we use, you know, the Journal of Medicine, we use American Heart Association, we use a lot of other regulatory bodies that say, this is what your goal should be. So we don't just, you know, arbitrarily make them up. And we are exceeding our, we are exceeding those standards. So very happy to report, costs are well-controlled, but we are offering above-average service and, and we're proud of that. So the goals, again, get our, get our rates to, to our expenses. Number two is we need to expand services at Station 49. Right now, that station is forecasted at 21% growth. So it, it's huge. And that's the one that's off of Mid-Atlantic Parkway. So we intend that by January 1, that we will hope to have a renovation completed and staff that station 24 hours. Currently, it's a 12 hours a day, seven days a week. We want to go 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that's going to be about a six months of our fiscal year. That'll be about 150,000 increase in expenses. If we did the full fiscal year, it'd be 300,000. And we're also anticipating about a $250,000 cost to renovate that building. So that is kind of rolled into this as well as our compensation. So our compensation has slipped below the market, especially for our EMTs. What we hope to do with this money is bring our compensation up to the 60th percentile of the market with a stretch goal to 75th. But that's a multi-phase process to try to get there. And what it would do is bring our EMTs up to the same starting pay as Berkeley County dispatchers as well as the firefighters. So that is something that we really believe in, is trying to make sure that we're on the, we're on a level playing field here. So that is what we intend to do with that money. And I am hopefully now going to draw your attention to the rate card itself. And you'll see that I've shown what our current rates are and what we charge for, as well as some of our other partners. I have Canal County's rates in here as a comparison. We have Martinsburg Fire. The next column over, you'll see I did engage a consultant in April to come in and look at our expenses to make sure that they're well-controlled, look at our revenue to make sure that it was optimized, and then also had them give us a recommendation on what our rate card should be or what we call sometimes in healthcare as a charge master. So we have the rates that are provided there. I've also, was also able to pull the rates from our billing software that tracks other EMS agencies and what they bill for and I have, in our area. And I have those displayed there. The average of all those costs and then how we compare to that average. The far column that you'll see over to the right, that is what Medicare and Medicaid pays us for each one of those services. Your biggest ones that you'll see there are ALS, BLS, and mileage. Those are, those are the most common things that we bill. So you have that there. You'll see that we are, we are far below the average. You'll see what the consultant recommended. I have today recommended, and this is what I recommended to our board, is to adopt the recommendation of the consultant for a couple of reasons. You'll see that next table over, you know, why? Why would we adopt that? You'll see what our cost per transport will be with our new budget. You'll see what the average charge of those would be plus our mileage and what that total is. So that brings the average charge of what it would be at these new rates just slightly above our costs. So it would put the average of 1,242 gross charges on an expense of $1,137. And that's what I'm proposing to you today. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do I have any questions?
I do. First of all, Brandon, thank you very much for being here today. And secondly, thank you for this very, very detailed breakdown. This is, there's, this really gets down into the minutia and really shows that 50% of your all's makeup is of Medicare, Medicaid users who are going to pay less than half of what your actual cost is. I was glad to hear you say for our taxpayers that this will not affect the residential or non-residential rates that go out every year to pay for our ambulance fee. We are only looking to get a better and fairer deal from the insurance companies who quite frankly have been getting a deal.
Yes, sir.
So we are looking just to, to level up and get a better rate reimbursement from the insurance companies. We all know, nothing happens in a bubble. This may affect some people that are underinsured or uninsured, but the good of the whole. So this is basically for us to be able to stay on top of where we need to be. Not, we're not just asking for this money to just go into an unencumbered fund. There's real services that are going to happen with this.
Yes, sir.
We're going to man that station 49 24 hours a day, which is right off of the Industrial Boulevard, Mid-Atlantic Parkway right there. So this is real money going into a real project that's going to show real benefit for accounting.
Yes, sir.
So with that being said, I just think this is a really great presentation that you've given us here. The only question I do have, what do you guys have in your unencumbered balance right now, like your reserve fund? Do you know what you have in that?
We do. So our cash position is about $5 million.
Okay, you have about $5 million setting in your cash position.
Yes, sir. With adding up, which, which would basically cover our current liabilities.
Sure, right. Exactly. We want to be able to cover our liabilities.
Yes, sir.
And we're trying to get our emergency services personnel into the 60th to 75th percentile, you said, for payment, for pay of what the surrounding area is receiving.
Yes, sir. 60th percentile was phase one.
Right. So that would bring them up to making the same amount as our 911, what do I want to call those?
Dispatchers.
Dispatchers. And then also as our full-time fire.
Yes, and I believe fire is going for another increase, but they would bring them to where they're at today.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I cannot reiterate enough that this is, we are just trying to level up with this. This is real money that we're putting into real service that's going to benefit the counties and it's not going to raise your residential fees or non-residential fees. So I think with all those being said, that, that really kind of answers all my questions. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Catlett? I'm ready to make the motion to approve the proposal to raise the transport fees to what was being proposed. So I'll make that motion. It's properly moved.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? Only thing I have to add is, number one, you've not, the ambulance authority has not asked for an increase in the rate for transport since 2016.
That's correct.
We're going to be able to get an additional 24-hour staff out of one of the busiest stations in Berkeley County.
Yes, sir.
And we'll go from 12 to 24 and handle the second due call in a much more efficient manner north and west from their position. So being able to add those services are, are critical to our counting. And also to Commissioner Hardy's point, this increase in the transport rate will keep us from having to going back to the public to request to pay increase in their fees. So those are monies that have been, truthfully have been left on the table. And I would ask, moving forward, that we look at that on an annual basis instead of falling so far behind. I think it'd be better for you and the boss. Okay? So if it's been properly moved and second, I would favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Yes, sir.
I'm very proud of the ambulance authority and I hope the community and the people in this community appreciate the services they get from our ambulance authority. It's second to none in West Virginia, believe me. So thank you for a great presentation.
Yeah, thank you. When our constituents call 911 and that phone's picked up, they know that there's an emergency, that there's, there's an ambulance on the way. That cannot be said for a lot of counties in Berkeley and, in West Virginia.
Our average response time right now is eight and a half minutes. It's not too shabby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Mr. Wine on ground maintenance.
We got to do this bit over here.
Yes, sir. That's what we're doing in this. You do have certification and publication. It was advertised on the website, distributed to vendors that had known interest. If you, to be more specific, while your facility staff does most all of your ground maintenance, this is more so for Sportsman's Paradise and the Pike Side Waterway, which are too large for your staff to do. You have two bids.
Yeah, I think that waterway is near 13 acres of hillside.
Where's that at?
In Pike Side?
Pike Side?
The waterway.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Right there behind the bowl now.
Okay, this is from CND Management, Property Management off of Montus Chapel Road.
You only have one. I'm sorry, this other one is incorrect. One bid. Better make it a good one. Believe they currently have it. Come on.
Let's go. Okay. Here we go.
That's it. Just usually, we believe they're doing it currently.
I believe they do, yes. Thank you.
Hardly leaving at that one.
All right, we're running ahead of schedule.
I'd like to say something just quickly if I just have a second here. I see Mr. Dennis in, in the room here who represents the governor's office and, and I want to reach out to him and all of our legislators, our local legislators, and want to work with him and the governor and our local legislators to try to work on a piece of legislation to try to give some of our seniors, some remedy, some of the, some of the pressure on our seniors in Berkeley County for our rising cost of our homes. I was on a local radio station talking about this and the homestead exemption has been stagnant at $20,000 for a very long time. And although we have not raised the levy rate in the county, people's real property taxes are rising because the values of their homes are rising. And I would like to work with the governor's office and all of our local legislators to come up with something that's permissive for counties and maybe it has some financial triggers in there, maybe median home prices or median income prices. Something that we can do so we can have a sliding scale for our homestead exemption for maybe Class A, Class B counties. And it'd be completely permissive. Counties, commissions would set that and be able to change that rate. But as I saw Mr. Dennis here in the, in the chamber, I wanted to make that, make that request of him that maybe this commission and the governor and our local senators and local delegates could work together on trying to come up with something that's plausible for everyone. I know our smaller counties that don't generate as much revenue struggle with that homestead exemption and don't want to raise that because they need those revenues, but counties that are growth counties that are putting a lot of pressure on their seniors, maybe that's something that we could work together on.
Talking to a pretty big advocate who just finished his 13th year on his Berkeley senior board of directors when I had to leave for this new job, and also someone who goes to every senior center in my seven counties. Actually, I ate lunch yesterday with the Hardy County senior. I'm a huge advocate of that. What we need to do is get our legislators involved. I've put bugs in governance here, but we really need to get our legislators, as you well know, we need to get our legislators behind that. And I can't imagine that that would be a geographical issue. I would think that everybody throughout the entire state would be for that.
You really get that oomph behind it if you can get the governor involved though.
Yes, you will, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
All right, we're running a little bit ahead of schedule. We're going to take a little bit of a break. We'll be back in a few minutes with Jen Swisher. We'll be back in a few minutes with Jen Swisher. All right, we're back in session. Next up is Jen Swisher, Communications Director. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, how are you today?
Oh, well.
Good morning.
I am going to bring a whole group up with me while we go through these, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Angela, Anna, and I'm going to add someone up.
We have a couple presentations, so thank you for having us here today. On April the 14th, 2025, emergency telecommunicator Anna Hernandez played a pivotal role by guiding a caller through the safe delivery of a baby over the phone. Thanks to her exceptional training, calm demeanor, and expert instructions, the newborn was delivered successfully. At approximately 7:26 a.m., a 911 call was received from a male caller advising that his wife was in labor. With no time to waste and the situation escalating rapidly, Ms. Hernandez immediately provided step-by-step guidance to the caller to ensure a safe and successful delivery one minute and 35 seconds after the 911 call was made. Soon afterward, Walker Monroe Getz was safely born and the dispatcher continued to provide crucial instructions to ensure both the mother and baby received the necessary care until the emergency medical team arrived on the scene. The safe delivery of a baby is a testament to the extraordinary skills and professionalism of emergency telecommunicator Hernandez and the importance of ongoing emergency medical training for both dispatchers and the public. We are very thankful that both the mother and the baby are doing very well and overjoyed for the family's newest addition. This incident serves as a reminder that the 911 emergency telecommunications are an essential part of the emergency response system capable of making life safety decisions even from a distance.
And we would like to present telecommunicator Hernandez with a certificate commemorating the birth of little Mr. Walker here and another stork pen. And if you remember, just a few months ago, Anna also helped deliver another little baby boy, so she has two stork pens now.
That's awesome.
So we're very excited. Thank you, Anna. And then I know Chief Truman has some things.
You're going to be a pro at this, aren't you? Yeah. Director Swisher pretty much said it all. I just want to highlight the system of care that it takes to, you know, to do this, you know, this kind of service and have this kind of outcome. So we're just overjoyed with, you know, the relationship that we have with dispatch, their incredible technical competence, as well as the crew that showed up today that knew exactly what to do in a somewhat extenuating circumstance. There were some details there that they displayed outstanding clinical competence on and we're very proud of them. So I also have some stork pens that our crew will be able to display on their Class B uniforms commemorating this event, and we also have some for Mr. and Mrs. Getz as well. I don't know if you have Class B, but you're welcome. Whatever you'd like to wear, go to the grocery store. We have Lieutenant Nick Vodker, EMT Ally Schroes, Captain Mulligan, Captain O'Neal.
Great baby.
Every birth story is definitely unique and special, but God gave Walker an amazing story, and I just want you to know that you were an integral part of that. And, you know, I just want to say thank you to everybody for letting us be here to meet you all. I met you all in person, but, you know, we are really grateful. This is an experience that will forever be ingrained in our hearts, and it's not every day you deliver your son at home, so it's something that we will treasure forever. And I'm just grateful, you know. My husband was very calm on the outward. It was comical listening to the call back, which we're also thankful to have because he was repeating everything she was saying, and I'm like, she's on speakerphone. But it was like in that moment, you know, and to the EMS team, just thank you so much for arriving, you know, as quickly as you were able to do and for your help there, taking care of us so well and safely to the hospital. Telling the story, people most often will ask, you know, if I was scared, and honestly it wasn't, you know, maybe it's a four-time mom thing, I knew what to do. But the one moment that fear entered my mind is driving in the ambulance on a West Virginia back road when Nick decided to stick an IV in my arm, and I'm like, you know, this is covered in potholes, is what I'm thinking. But these amazing individuals are so good at what they do, there is no reason to fear anything, and I'm just so grateful that we have them so in our community.
Thank you. Thank every one of you and your beautiful baby, Walker. Thanks for bringing him in this morning. And the people truly do not realize how highly skilled our personnel are. I mean, if you walk into the dispatch center, they're looking at five or six, maybe more by now, different computer modules and screens. They're typing faster than somebody can talk, and it's amazing, their skill sets. On the EMS side, these guys are so highly trained, and that little girl right there, I've known her since she was a small child, and to see her out today providing these services in our community, it's pretty awesome. And she came from a background of people who give. Her dad was a fireman and now he's at the VA as a paramedic as well, and her mom's a nurse as well as an instructor, so she's come from a deep bloodline of people giving. That's what the same with every one of you. You are all givers, and we thank you, and we truly thank you. And, you know, those two supervisors that are on the end, you know, they're top-notch, you know. They don't wave at me anymore because I don't think they know my vehicle, but I see them on the way back, you know. So I know you're going to help folks and help your crews that are out there, maybe need a little bit of assistance or whatever. And, but thank every one of you for what you do. I don't know where we'd be without you, so take good care of that little baby and hope to see him maybe in this line one day. So thank you very much. Okay, hey, we're going to grab a picture if you don't mind. We're just going to take a small break and we'll grab a picture.
All right, we're back in session. Next up, Joe Burton, Executive Director, Martinburg County Parks and Rec Approval of Access Levy Campaign. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir.
I want to first thank all the members of our community that came out to hear this today and to support Parks and Rec. I really appreciate them taking time out of their day to come. So I've been before the commission since I started about 18 months ago. I think this is my fourth time here. And each time, we're talking about funding, funding, and funding. And you guys are all well aware of our struggles. So today, I want to kind of summarize some of this and get to this request. If you could go to the next slide, please. So we dove really deep into our finances this budget season. We looked at actual expenses for all the parks, the parks in the city and the parks in the county. And when we did our budget request this year, it was based on that. It was based on real dollars that were spent last year and some of the increase in expenses for this year. So I feel really proud of the work that our team did on that. And we knew that coming to the city and to the county and asking for about $1 million more than we had in previous years was a stretch and we were going to get some raised eyebrows and some questions. But we did it because we want full transparency on the needs of the organization and what is actually being spent. We did have a brief period of some extra funds from the COVID era that padded our budget a little bit and allowed us to continue to deal with the great numbers of people coming to the parks and some of the additional maintenance expenses we were facing. But unfortunately, those funds are gone. And we're continuing to have those same needs. So this year's budget request, if you combine the city and the county, we were asking for about $2.4 million. And that included the hotel motel from each entity. And that about matches the $2.2 million that we generate ourselves through all the programs that we run. And keep in mind, and I know you all know this, but we're generating $2.2 million for just programs that we charge money for. And that's a tiny percentage of what we actually offer. The biggest part of what we do is free, and it still has great expense that comes with it. We understood that that request was more than the county was able to provide and the city was able to provide. And we've looked at what we could do on our end to come up with more funds ourselves. That meant increasing admission fees, increasing registration fees, which only accounts for about $100,000. So while we are pressing our community to pay a little bit more for nearly everything we charge for in this coming year, it's still only going to put a tiny dent in a big need that we have. So the next thing we have to look at is decreasing services and decreasing staff to work within our means. Flip it, please. This chart I've shared with you guys before, and it's just a good way to illustrate how our funding's been over the years. Going all the way back to 2008, there hasn't been much change at all in our allocated funds. You can see the red line is hotel motel, and that's had the greatest change. And there has been a spike in it, and it's started to come down a little bit. But if you look at the total dollar amounts, we're talking about an increase of less than $500,000 in that part of our funding. And that's over many, many years. And allocated funds are the blue line, which has remained nearly flat for that same period of time. The one line that has steadily increased are the funds that we generate. And I've explained that to you. Flip it again, please. This is just a comparison of where we stack up with other rec departments in similar-sized communities. In almost every area, we're about one-third of what our neighboring counties offer. And I bring this up not to say anything bad about us at all, but just to point out that we're struggling to fund our Parks and Rec system at a level that is 30% of what the median is in our country. So I believe we can do better. And I understand that the county and the city are doing everything they can. So I think we have to look for another way to fund this organization. Flip it again, please. Because what we face right now, and including the funds we asked for this year, we're looking at funds just to maintain the level we're at. We're not even talking yet about improving our services. We're trying to maintain the good services that we offer now at the same level. And we're not even able to fund that. So where we are today puts us at about $4 million in deferred maintenance projects. Flip it one more time. And that's not to mention over $55 million in capital improvements that I know the city's working on and the county's working on. But those funds are just not identified to complete all those projects yet. One more time. So this is our present reality. We're facing about $1 million a year in operational deficits, about $60 million in mostly unfunded capital improvements and deferred maintenance. We're looking at impact fees hopefully becoming a reality very soon, and we're excited about that. We know that it will help with some of those capital improvements in growth areas. However, they will not help us with the deferred maintenance, with our staffing or operations. We need a new sustainable funding source. So today, I'm asking your approval for an access levy directed to the park system that would provide that source. And ultimately, it would be up to our community to decide if they wanted to approve that or not. So today, I'm not asking you for those funds, but rather, I'm asking for the ability to ask the community for those funds.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, can you tell us how that will affect area homeowner? What type of increase would they be looking at?
I hate to dive too deep into this because this is my estimates, and I'm not a lawyer that specializes in bonds and levies. So that's something we have to discuss with the lawyers. $300,000, and I'm not talking about your assessed value, but I'm talking about your actual selling value of your home, a home that was worth about that much money, you would be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 a month or $120 a year to fund this excess levy. And if we're able to do that, we would be able to have a budget that would help us not only continue our operations but improve our operations.
Well, what's the total amount you think you need per year, Joe? You're saying probably a million a year just for operational.
Well, we're talking to be at the level that we're at right now would take four and a half million.
Four and a half.
We would really like to get at least six and a half million to be in a position to start catching up on deferred maintenance and improve our operations.
Say five million, roughly, just say five million.
Six and a half.
Six and a half. Okay.
And you have, Joe, you have your operational and your capital need pulled out of that. How are they split?
So capital is really a different bucket. I'm talking about operations and some deferred maintenance. Capital is really something different, and that's what we would count on, something like impact fees that takes care of some of those biggest ticket, high-dollar capital improvements like building out a new park. But the deferred maintenance, which was quite a lot of money, are things that we could take care of in our operational budget if we had adequate funding for our maintenance and repairs.
I'd like to say this. Our public park system is like our public water and sewer districts, it's like our sheriff's department, it's like our fire department, it's like our 911 operations. They're all overwhelmed by the rapid growth, and we can't keep up with any of them, and we've been begging the state of West Virginia legislature for help to try to answer this But we must find a way to better fund this very significant part of our community, and in my mind, anyone who thinks it's not a vital part of our fabric of this community is wrong. The last thing we should do, and we're getting ready to build a new park in Inwood, getting ready to open one up on 901 in North Berkeley County, is to build parks and then not maintain them at a high level, and I probably understand that as well as anybody. So I certainly think, I don't think that we're able to make a decision today, but we certainly need to consider this very seriously and give it some serious thought. And at the same time, we're working every way we can to make it better. We've been promoting this public safety tax bill, you know, at 1% increase on the tax base, and that would solve a lot of our issues, including Parks and Rec, but we haven't gotten there yet. We've got impact fees in place that we've never had before soon here in the next few months, and so we're getting there, but it's happening too slow, and we realize that. We have to find a way to fund the park system better, and I understand that, and we're going to do everything in my mind we can to make that happen regardless of what source. The negatives to the excess levy are a couple. One, it takes a 60% vote, a supermajority, and number two, it's renewable every five years. So if you go out and hire more people and pay benefits, and then for some reason it passes safer 61%, and then five years later it gets 59%, and you're in a real dilemma. So it's not the ideal source of income, but it's one of the few alternatives we have as a commission to provide that kind of money. So I think it's something that I'm willing to consider very seriously along with my fellow commissioners to try to get there if we think we need to. Obviously, the need's there. I've said enough.
Yeah, I have a few questions. So Joe, if this levy was put forward and was passed, if it was put on the ballot and it was successful, do you know, you have any idea what that generates for you? And you may have said that number, and I missed it, but do you know what that generates?
Again, I would have to defer to the lawyers to actually run the rate and make some calculations. In my very rough estimate, and I'm not the person to do that, I would think we could generate at least six to eight million dollars from this.
We can get that figure figured out through our assessor's office. If we just have a cap at what, here's how much we want to generate a year, and our staff, Gary, can do that himself and tell you how much it's going to cost for a home of $300,000.
Gary, if we max out to the Parks and Rec through the impact fee, do we know what that number is?
You're projecting for them just shy of $2 million on the impact, but you haven't even set the fees yet.
We haven't set the fees yet, but I'm saying if we go to the max that we're allowing.
It qualifies for $1,700 per single-family dwelling is what Parks and Rec qualifies for.
We projected that just shy of $2 million.
Around $2 million, yeah.
And that's if you were to go to the maximum.
Then again, that's just capital development on new growth. You can't use it for salaries.
The impact fees do have a lot of guardrails, and I was shocked at how many guardrails were in the impact fees as we learned about them. So you're saying six to eight million dollars. When would you start to see revenue from this? If this went on to the ballot, went on to the...
Gary, you correct me if I'm wrong, but if it goes on the ballot in May of 2026, it could be as soon as July of 2026.
Tax year '27.
Because it's going to run a year in the rears.
That's right. But in effect, July 1 of '26, but you wouldn't collect any money on it.
July 1 of '27 is when you would start to see real dollars. That would put us two years into the impact fees.
So it sounds like we understand and, you know, we appreciate these parks, we love going to these parks, and a lot of families enjoy them. The increase that you've made through, like, admission rates and stuff like that, you said generated about $100,000.
Well, that's what is projected for this year. We're just putting those increases into effect.
So if you were successful in this, would you have an opportunity to go back and reduce some of those entrance fees on children in particular?
I would absolutely love to do that. I think we could look at, we could easily say we will not have any additional increases in any fees for the remainder of the levy period, and I think there may be some that we actually could dial back.
But also, Joe, it sounds like there's still some work on your side to do to be able to drill down on your actual dollars.
This is the first step. Getting your permission today will allow us to start talking seriously to lawyers with a real timeline. This is a time-sensitive issue. I really want to run this in May of 2026 due to a lack of other issues that would be on that ballot. As you guys know, we can only run this in even years in a primary or a general election. So pushing this out to a time where we might not have to run an effective campaign could end up pushing us back a years.
It'd be '28 again before you could run it if you don't do it in '26.
That's right. So if you were, I understand if you're saying you're not able to approve this today, but if you were to approve this today, we have 11 months to put together a winning campaign. That's a very tight timeline. If that turns into 10 months, it's that much tighter.
One last question, Joe. Do you have any idea what it will cost you to put together that campaign and what it will cost the Parks and Rec to be able to come up with that resolution, to come up with how that's going to be worded on the ballot, and also the money that you will spend in that campaign to try to get that across the finish line?
I don't have an estimate on the legal fees yet. It depends a lot on what we're able to do in-house versus what we have to pay, and I've talked to Bull's Race about it because that's who I've worked with before on a bond campaign, and they were certainly willing to help us with that, and they can get us those estimates. I really needed some more hard information to give them before I get those kinds of estimates.
I can appreciate that. I was just kind of getting a feel for what it was going to cost to try to put the campaign together.
That's the legal side of it. On the campaign side of it, what we can do as the rec department is provide information to people, so we can't tell people vote yes or no for anything. What we can do is say what we can do with these funds, what we plan to do with these funds, how much those funds will cost. Anything that's informative is what would be our mission to do. We would lean on a committee of outside community members to do the other work for us that may be able to say vote yes for this issue, and they would certainly have to do some fundraising on their end, which also will take some time.
Very good. Well, anybody else have any other comments or questions for Joe?
I don't. I think it's a very good... It's been 27 years since this was attempted in Berkeley County. It was done three times in the 1990s. Scott Rager remembers that very well, and the last time was '98, so it's 27 years ago. County-wide, the 54% of the vote at that time, but you needed 60% to get it in place. And so, you know, it's been a long time, and maybe the climate is better, and, you know, our park system has significantly grown since then despite the fact with very little money, so we've been very fortunate there. And so as a whole, even though we have more residents, I think we have more residents that are using our park system more than we did obviously 27 years ago, not just because of the fact that we have more people, but the fact we have more facilities. City of Martinsburg, setting back, you've done a great job with the quality of life in Martinsburg and Berkeley County, and we appreciate what you're doing. And I hope we can get to a point here at the county level where we can do as much as well, and it's such an important part of this community, we've got to take care of our parks and grow it, and it means too much to too many people. You know, people here can go to the national park, and people here can go to the state park at Canane and spend a week, but there's a whole lot of residents here. Guess what? The Poorhouse Farm is their national park or their state park. Lambert Pool or Lambert, Direct Center at Lambert Park is their recreation and leisure, and that's how it affects people.
Yeah, and we cannot continue to increase those admission fees, the rental fees have all, everything's, I know that you, a lot of these fee structures have been increased, and you cannot continue to create these, the impact on these children to be able to get into a park to enjoy a day of swimming or something of that nature.
It's not only that, but it's all the activities that we offer for free that will be the first things to be cut out when we have to cut services because we're not in a position where we can cut out anything that produces revenue.
Most of the parks are non-revenue producing. Let's be honest about it. It costs money to take care of.
I'm into your parks. I think your crews are doing an excellent job. I'm proud of our parks, you know, when we go into them, they're clean, they look well, they're well taken care of. You know, I wish you could have put some warm water into folks for Monday morning when they were out swimming on the opening day, but no, we understand your position, and, you know, I don't know about the rest of you, I'm not prepared today to ask for that. So I'd like to look to my fellow commissioners and ask what direction you want, where you want to take this.
Well, I think with that being said, I think if we're going to make a decision like this, we should have a commission of five. There's all five commissioners should be here. I would like to take a week to digest the information that's in front of us, and I do appreciate everything that Joe's done and the board has done. I understand that Parks and Rec has been working with, you know, baling wire and twine, as Joe said, and we definitely need...
Duct tape.
Duct tape, baling wire and duct tape, and we definitely need to find a revenue stream for the park. I am sometimes hesitant to always go back to the levies because what we do is we just keep pounding on the same people over and over and over, and that's why I just can't understand why the legislature will not give us the ability to have, to put out for a vote for a 1% sales tax for us to catch pass through. And I'm going to get on my soapbox, but we have all this pass-through economy that we can't get a hold of, we have all this cash economy that we can't get a hold of, and we don't let people just decide how they want to spend their money. So we have to come back to a levy, and we keep leaning on the same people over and over and over with our levies. And I understand, and that's not towards you guys, it's just the legislature has this divine ability to keep counties poor, and the homeowners get caught in the switches. But I think that this is a wonderful presentation. I understand that the Parks and Recs needs a solid revenue stream to catch up and maintain, and I think a park, good park services are very important and fundamental to a good community, so. But I would like a little time to digest this. So with that, Mr. President, I would move to table this until we have a commission of five and also some time to digest this request.
Been properly moved.
A second then.
And second. Any further discussion?
I do want to say one more thing before we vote, but Matt Homestead did a study here in Gary, and he worked on this, but I've got all the excess levies through the whole state of West Virginia here, and you'd be surprised, but there's 50-some throughout the state, and I don't know if it's just muddying the water here or something to consider, but most of them are multiple levies where they include multiple agencies and not just one. And the theory behind it, like Campbell County, for instance, has seven different things that the levy money goes towards, and the thought there behind their success in passing it is you've got seven entities going out and trying to get it passed instead of one, and I don't know if that should be given some serious thought to maybe combine another agency or two so you have more in the game fighting to get it passed, would help or not. In other words, you could keep the budget level that you need, but then add another budget level for someone else needs and do it together, and maybe there's no interest on the park board's part to do that.
I think that...
Now, what you don't want, though, is, the last time we did, when there was four, one time there was four separate excess levies on the same ballot, and all went down in flames because you can't have four, but if you had one, maybe include some other. Almost every single one in the state is multiple, and there's very few that's just a single entity levy alone, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that that would give us the ability to reach out to all different sections of our community and gain support in multiple sections. My only concern with that is I really want to be 100% transparent about what we are doing at Parks and Rec. Right now, a lot of people vote for the school access levy believing that they are funding a number of other organizations, and they are funding a number of other organizations, but the Parks and Rec part of that is $132,000 out of like $46 million. So I don't know if people understand that, and I would like to be clear about what we're doing. When we ask the public a question, I want to be honest about what we're promising, and I want everybody to be crystal clear about what they're voting on.
Yeah, I understand that, appreciate that.
Yeah, and I want to bring some clarity to that because in previous conversations, we've talked about if you were successful in passing this levy, you would back out of that school levy, or would you still stay a part of that?
I don't think that it would be fair to the public for us to stay in the school access levy, and I think that maybe those funds could be used for another community organization or for the schools themselves.
Well, I think that it's such a minimal amount of money out of $40 million that you receive, $130,000, that's pretty disproportionate, and that's being kind, but I would say that if you were going to run your own levy, then it would be a Parks and Rec levy, and you would no longer be a part of the school levy. The school levy would be the school levy, and if they wanted to take that other part of that money and give it to another organization, that's fine, but you have your own independent levy. I think that's key to people understanding that.
Mr. Board, you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't. I'm like with John and Steve, we need to take some time to digest this and, you know, get some real math behind it and take a solid look at it, and then again, maybe add the organizations, get more support for it, and see what, are we standing at that point?
Very good. Thank you. Okay, guys, you've been moved a second. I think we've finished our discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, have it.
My only request would be that with all due respect, that you could give me a date when we might reconvene and talk about this, and if there's any information you want from me, I'd be happy to get it for you. I didn't set the date of this meeting, you guys did, so I just want you, just being clear, every day that we prolong, it will be harder for us to pass this. We're already on a tight timeline, so I know you guys have questions to answer and work to do, but the sooner we can get to it, the better.
We're going to stick with the 6.5 million, you think? That's what we need is a number, and of that 6.5 with a million, that would be for operation and then the rest for capital development?
No. I think that right now we're at 4.5 in operations, and we're not able to address deferred maintenance. So I think increasing to 6.5 would get us to a point where we could be catching up on deferred maintenance and making actual updates and improvements in the parks. Doesn't really go to massive capital improvement projects.
The real question is, Joe, what, how much revenue do you want to generate with the levy? What's your number?
I would like to do 6.5 million.
You want to generate additional 6.5. That's what I wrote down. That's all we need.
And that would be per year. Correct?
That'll allow us to do the calculation.
Is there any thought process that if we generated 6.5 million per year for five years, and then if the levy came up to be able to renew it, that maybe the rate could drop somewhat, or do you think you'd have yourself pigeonholed into that amount?
It could possibly. I think that we would have to look at that. I mean, we're talking about catching up on a lot of things and prioritizing, prioritizing to a level that we don't even want to, you know, just hitting the, putting out those brightest fires first. So I think as we get into that, it's probably going to open up questions like, okay, now do we have to redo these bathrooms? Do we have to add a bathroom to this park that's really short on restrooms? So it's going to be increasing the level of service as we go. It may be that we can catch up, and maybe with a growing population, we could reduce that rate and still be funding.
Because $30 million in five years is a lot of money. It is a lot of money.
Yeah, but the way it is, population... Yeah, but way this population is growing and 30, down the road, we're going to need to build more parks, bigger parks. And I can see a need for it. And the hard one is to get the first one passed. Marion County has had one for Parks and Rec for 40 years. I have known them very well. And it's getting the first one passed. And then once the people can see what you're doing with it, then they're more likely to go back and keep renewing it. And that's, that's, if we go this route, it's just getting the first one passed, that's the struggle and the hard thing.
I feel very confident the public would be happy with the work we could do.
I agree with that.
Very good, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else from the audience want to speak about it? I, I mean, I'm hoping if anybody else wants to come up on behalf of the park system and speak, I'd like to hear from you. Don't be shy. Scott Roach was on the, Scott Roach was on the park board for 30 years. And he knows better than anybody what we've been through over the years.
So, you know, this is, this is the lifelong dilemma, right? Certainly, like Steve said, I was on the park board for about 30 years. I currently have gotten recruited by them to support their not-for-profit entity. And we're not real active yet, but I would imagine if something like this opportunity came up, we would probably get engaged with fundraising and, and trying to make this thing get through. But, you know, I don't think I need to preach to the choir on this. It's, it's, and Steve knows this, it's three things really important in communities. And one of those is school system. And the other one's healthcare and the other one's parks and recreation. When you talk to businesses, that's, that's really the only things they really care about. Now, they want to know they've got a good workforce potential in that community. But as we look at what's going on in this community, we've got, we've got to start to figure out how we're going to keep up with the growth we're having here. I mean, there's just no other way. We, you know, concerns about, it'd be nice if it didn't have to run a levy, but if you have to run a levy, and I think the sooner, as Joe says, the sooner they know, the better off we'll have an opportunity to pass this thing. But we, we've got undeveloped parklands sitting around the county. Could have been sitting there for probably 15 or 20 years that we don't have any money to develop. We've got some in Hedgesville, you know, the adjoining stuff at Poorhouse has had, not had, had anything done to it at this point. I think there's a couple other around as well. And, you know, a, an excess levy would go a long way to, to making that happen. I mean, you saw the chart Joe had and this, and this has been going on forever. And it's just unfunded mandates, which you all get all the time as well. It's a nonstop proposition for the Parks and Rec system. And I, and I don't know, I don't know how they continue to survive at some point, quite honestly. I'm not on the board anymore. I look at their financials and I really don't know how they continue to provide services ongoing if they don't get some type of relief. Appreciate Charles' time.
Thank you, Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? So I certainly can't speak to, for the Parks and Recs. My name's Nadine Kennedy, I'm a top-producing realtor here in this area. I'm a top 5% of Berkeley County, I'm a top 5% of Jefferson County, and I'm one of the top 8% in the nation. And I say all this just to say this, that I am speaking to our homeowners constantly. I'm always involved with our residents beyond both the Berkeley and Jefferson County chambers and rotaries and different things that we are involved in. And we fully support Joe in this. Joe has actually been absolutely fantastic. He shows up whenever we're having events at his park, he personally shows up. Our residents are dying for not only better facilities, although they've done a fantastic job, but also more facilities. And as we bring more people in here, it's becoming more and more and more important. I am so thankful and pleased to see the positive feedback that you guys have given this. We are all very much so in unison. And this comes up consistently in my home sales, in my home purchases. It's come up multiple times in selling homes of they just want more amenities, they want more things to do, they want this, they want that. And it all falls back down to Parks and Rec. It is, it's astounding to see how much they've done with so little. And I just want to thank you guys, you know, I was so pleased to see how much you've supported this. I'm looking forward to knowing when that next meeting is here because I, like every other professional in this building, I'm busy. I mean, I just came from a closing rush in here, I got shows, I got a million and one things to do. But I will make a point to show up every time you set this meeting. I will sit here in this crowd and if you need anything from me and there's anything we can do to support you guys in this, you let me know. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Just wanted to, I understand the struggles that Parks and Recs are going through. And I think Steve and I over the years have always told them, keep coming back, keep coming back for the monies. And on both ends, I speak for the city of Martinsburg that the monies aren't there to maintain and, and to enhance what we already have in our system and we keep adding on, not just county, but city does also. And I could tell you that as mayor and the city of Martinsburg, we give full support of this levy. If there's anything that we can do or any questions that you may have of us, we'd be more than happy to, to work together. But we give full support to that.
Thanks, sir.
I got an email last night from a resident that said, Mr. Kallid, I grew up in the park system. I remember you out there refereeing my game and blah, blah, blah. I've got three kids now and they're, I'm running here to soccer. I'm running, when are you going to get turf on the soccer fields and lights down there at Dupont? I replied back, I said, we're working on it, believe me, but we'll get there hopefully. But it happens all the time. And any money we spend in that, in this area is, is good money spent. There's no way, there's no way you're wasting money when you're spending on the public park system. There's just no way. And then the other thing is that we've already got resources here like the Dupont Soccer. If you turf and light those fields, that could be a money generator for the park system, huge. Because they could bring in tournaments there. On turf field, you could play not just soccer, you could play lacrosse. And you could, I mean, you can paint the lines for baseball, softball, whatever you want to do, you could have multiple. We've got it right there. We're on the interstate exit 12 or 20 and it's right there. All we got to do is spend about $5 million turf and light the fields and they could generate a half a million dollars a year just off that complex. And I understand that. That's where we got to get.
Very good, anybody else? Okay, guys, thank you very much. Next up is Jennifer Smith, Executive Director of Burke County Development Authority. Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you. In everyone's packet, they have a TIF resolution as well as a TIF application for amendment. So just to give a little background, I know especially for John and I think Steve, the original TIF plan was approved back in December of 2023, I believe, and is currently in place. So what we are currently trying to do is amend the North TIF District to add the entire Dupont parcel into the North TIF District. In order to do that, there is a process of amending the application as well as the resolution to host a public hearing on July 17th here at 11:00 a.m. So today I am asking for the consideration of that resolution to get the July 17th, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. for the public hearing for the TIF application. And in that, there will be, there will be a map that we will share during that public hearing as well, which is currently not in the TIF application.
We don't have that map right now.
No, but you do have
Back up a minute, so the Dupont, you're talking about the 1,200 acres that Chocky owns?
That's correct.
And so, because CMC's already in that, but
They, they have purchased, they purchased about 200 of those acres.
Are they not in the TIF now?
They're not.
They are not, so we're looking to
So none of that acreage is in the TIF, correct?
It's currently not in the TIF.
And it was intentionally left out?
Correct.
It was.
So for what reason?
It was intentionally
We wanted the revenue.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so part of the whole reason the county commission was helping CMC, there's a lot of infrastructure needs that CMC needs in order to move their project forward.
Which we've been helping them with.
The, the TIF will 100% help with a portion of that. But it's taking away tax revenue from the county, which obviously is their operational budget.
Is the trade-off good? My question, is it good?
Yes.
Yes.
I've, I've been convinced of it since 2023.
Yes.
That that was the right thing to do. To be able to create both of those districts on the north and the south TIF, right out the gate on the north end, we're going to be able to build a public safety complex to involve police, fire, EMS, and a small dispatch center without having to go back to the fire board, the ambulance authority, or the taxpayers and say, hey, we need to increase your fees because we need to build this new building. You know, we, we will be able to help industry with water and sewer and road upgrades without having to go back to those water and sewer districts and request an increase. We will be able to help those attract industry and commercial activity, which will expand our tax base and create jobs. Yes, sir, it's worth it.
Yes, and I agree wholeheartedly with Eddie. And part of what the TIF can pay for, the water department is currently looking to expand that water line, which is a 48-inch line, I believe, that will go all the way to Beddington. So it's not only going to help CMC, it will benefit everyone in that area.
They also replaced a section, there was a section that had a 12-inch line and a 12-inch line and a 10 in between it, and they went ahead and replaced all that. So anytime that we can bring industry and jobs to our community, big industrial users for water, sewer, and electricity help hold down the rates for the residential users. The more electricity and water and sewer that they use, it helps offset any expansions and cost to residential users.
And like Eddie said, we do have this money in a bucket now that can help with that infrastructure, which previously we did not have.
So do we need to
Today, I do need
Read this resolution?
Today, I do need the approval of, I need a motion to approve the resolution. The resolution is just adopting that we will have a public hearing on July 17th here at 11:00 a.m. The public hearing notices they will be published and shared with all the taxing entities as well. And once the public hearing is done, the county commission will approve the TIF amendment. That amendment will then be sent to the West Virginia Economic Development Office for the final approval.
What was the date and time of that?
July 17th.
July 17th at 11:00 a.m.
I have a question.
Sure. Wait, sir.
Yeah, we, we left CMC out in '23, I thought that area was in.
No, we purposely left that out for tax purposes. The, like I said, we are reducing the operational budget of the county by taking the taxes away from the county. But the county commission had agreed to start the amendment process to add CMC in that. And that's, that's where we're currently at right now.
Yeah, those, those dollars going, going in Those dollars going into that
I'm listening.
Yeah, those dollars that are going into that TIF district will be able to help, as I had mentioned, the public safety building, but that's just, that's just one, one entity. But as far as helping to expand the infrastructure in and around that, that TIF district will be tremendous long-term. You know, we, we may have to forego some tax dollars that come into us, but to be able to offset that so you don't have to go back to the ratepayers for those increases for those utilities, I, I think long-term will be a very good decision.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree there, I was just like, so, so if we make this amendment now, the current tax rate that's on that property will stay and will just get what goes above? Or will this retroact back to when the TIF started?
No, it will, whatever you're currently getting, you will get. And then anything, once it's approved, then will go in a separate bucket.
Okay, so, so basically, since we left it out, that's putting a good portion towards the schools and everything else.
That's correct.
And what comes additional with CMC here beyond will now go towards the TIF, which can be used towards public safety, building, et cetera, right?
That's correct, but I just want to point out, you mentioned schools, the schools will 100% be made whole regardless.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just going to read, if you, if it's okay, just therefore being resolved. That, that should cover us, correct?
Yes.
So, Mr. President, I'll make the motion that we accept the resolution and for the public hearing on July 17th at 11:00 a.m.
That is to include the, to amend the North TIF District.
That is to amend the North TIF District, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, it's been moved?
Second.
And second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ahs have it. Thank you, Joe.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, very much. And I did want to mention Keith McIntosh is here from the West Virginia Development Office. He has been hitting the ground running and I definitely appreciate his help with the CMC project.
I was going to ask Keith who he was working for now.
Hi, Keith.
Hi, nice to see you.
Welcome, nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
So you're working with?
West Virginia Development Office.
Okay.
So he is the new, I don't want to say the new Jim Lindsay Meyer, but he has taken over in that position. So he now has the seven counties? Eight counties.
You landed on your feet, just like that.
Very busy.
Yeah, that's good.
And happy to be busy doing this for all of us. Happy to be here and support this public authority and their request and all supporting them as well. And happy to be on the Parks and Recs.
Well, we appreciate having you. We know, I know what your work ethic is and I know you've been in the mix for a long time. So it's good to have someone in that position that knows how the game is played and, and understands all the different minutia that happen, so.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Need you to go over to the Department of Transportation and talk to them about Eastern Panhandle. Do a little nudging while you're, when you're in Charleston, okay, Keith?
Happy to, happy to catch up.
Yep.
Yeah, we're looking forward to good things, I agree. So welcome aboard and congratulations and let's get some stuff done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, next up, Gary, on the bid award for the DRC furniture.
Thank you, Mr. President. You, you do, you had a, a bid opening on March the 22nd for the second, for the Day Report Center. You received two bids, one from Labor's out of Hagerstown and the other from Global Industries out of Port Washington, New York. The low bid was Labor's at $22,273,070, $273.70, excuse me. They met all the specifications, so we're requesting that you approve the low bid from Labor's.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ahs have it.
Aye.
Thank you. And on the, on the mobile data computers?
The second one is a grant-funded request for mobile data computers for law enforcement. You did open them on the 22nd, you had six responses. However, the low bid to that one did not meet specifications. So the, we're requesting that you approve the lowest responsible bid, which is the next one in line, from Concourse Technology in the amount of $24,852.88.
So moved, say again. Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the next is on the Water District going to dispense of the bond requirement?
Yes, sir, so you have a request and Director Willette sent this to me directly. You've had multiple conversations. As you well know, the Water District is an arm of this body. You appointed their board and when they're required to meet bond needs, that goes right back on the taxpayer. So the taxpayer is paying to secure you, to watch them, to, to, to create the new project. So Jim, in, in his efforts all along, has always asked, and when they've gotten to the end, they've asked for reprobation. In this instance, these are relatively In this instance, these are relatively large. I did talk to Brian Ross. He has no issues with it, of course. It's your decision. And if you're confident that the Water District won't dissolve somewhere in a project and walk off and not finish. But this is really a request to eliminate those needs and to save the ratepayers' money, because it's their money.
Not going anywhere, that's for sure.
No, but it is the commission's decision to waive those.
I have no problem with it.
I need a motion to dispense of.
I'll make that motion that we waive that bond.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I would say, sitting on the Water Board, I would say, sitting on the Water Board, they are very, they take their fiduciary matters very, very serious, and they, it's a very good board. Everyone is there for the right reasons. They work hard. There's some personalities there, that's okay. But they take their fiduciary responsibility very serious, and they are always in good financial standing. So I have no problem waiving that.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ahsav. Thank you.
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Okay, let's go bring it to conclusion of our meeting. I just want the public. Hearing none. We do have a need for executive session, and there will be no action taken. Legal matters, yes.
We go into executive session for legal matters.
On favor, say aye. Seconded.
Aye.
Move to executive session.
Good job.